Council to order. We're doing department roundtables tonight, and the first one is Public Works. And we have Public Works Director Darrell Braithwaite on the dais with us. Welcome.
Good evening. Ready to roll?
Yep.
Just jump right in. You know what we do. We take care of the various infrastructures of the city and manage the city's environmental programs.
Our measures of success, obviously, are active participation by residents, feedback from the community, and completing the projects that we have in the budget on time and hopefully on budget. Some key recent accomplishments, and here I really must note, the addition of our professional staff has meant a lot to our ability to take on more and really improve the quality of our work. So the special projects coordinator, our sustainability manager, and now recent addition of our construction manager have already made big impacts into our productivity, and no doubt this will continue. We're in the early stages of our implementing our energy action plan. We're in the beginning of a two-year competition for the Georgetown Energy Prize with 50 other communities to reduce residential energy use. The March newsletter, we'll have more information about that for residents, and I understand we're on the council agenda later in March with Gina Mathias to update you on that kickoff. A fast note, our, last week, the Solar Energy Co-op selected its installer. They had 90 applicants, about 50 of which are still in the program and hoping to get pricing from the installer, so that's moved ahead quite well. Our food waste program is citywide. We did that this year. We're currently collecting half through a contractor and half through city staff. One of the things you'll see in next year's budget is our desire to bring that program entirely in-house and do all the collection, combine it with all our other sanitation services, and that does have some budget implications. The Flower Avenue project is moving along. In fact, today, we had a meeting with the National Fish and Wildlife Federation reps that are providing funding through a grant for us for our bioretention and stormwater pieces. She was particularly impressed with the, our ability to integrate so many different components in the program, and was really struck by how we were able to get a lot of things done, or at least plan to get a lot of things done simultaneously. And of special note was, she, in fact, invited us to participate in a webinar with other municipalities to discuss effectively working with utilities, which is a challenge. And had anyone ever said we'd be the poster child, but as we were talking about our program there, Flower Avenue is just a perfect example. It required really early intervention and constant communication with utility companies, Washington Gas doing their piece, WSSC doing their piece, and the end result is going to be a project that none of us could have imagined, you know, two years ago when we were first starting out. So we're looking forward to continuing that. In terms of next steps, the next thing you're going to see is an LED streetlight conversion on the street, which has been funded through Community Development Black Grant, should be taking place before the end of June. Let's see, we've got playground development. We had three different projects that we were working on. The Colby Avenue Playground is in the final design, and we're hoping to go out for bid for that for construction in the spring or summer. The Sligo Mill Playground is currently in the early stages, a very challenging process, and we really haven't moved much forward in that, but we're continuing to work with Park and Planning and the community on that project. The dog park site, which we were tromping around out there this morning, little cold. We've finalized the site plan through the work of Eric Saul and Joe Edgell, and we'll be bringing that in-house. We think we can do the development and design in-house and hope to be able to advertise for an RFP in the spring. Again, that's a future, I think another couple of weeks will be a topic on your council agenda. Trends for us? I think the trend is that we'll continue to be very, very, very busy, and we feel like we need to continue to look for and identify and hopefully continue to be successful with third-party sources of funding to grow and enhance our programs, particularly the environmental Terms of challenges and opportunities, currently what's on my mind is real implementation of the recently passed environmental laws, and my mind is going to require some staffing. We don't have in-house capabilities to really move those into real programs. We've done well with SafeGrow, but the real challenge, of course, will come this spring with another season and people to educate, and it now being, including residences as well as just the commercial applicators. The polystyrene ban, which again, is going to take a lot of door-to-door work, a lot of information, and a lot of advocacy, and fairly soon we'll be talking about the multifamily and commercial recycling requirements, and that too will require some real staffing in order to make those real and to move them forward.
One question off the subject, says on the safe from polystyrene, especially polystyrene, to the extent that you might enlist outsourcing this to business associations and/or groups like Crossroads, Community Food Network, and then for the recycling stuff, whether you can pawn any of it off on housing and community development?
I'm not here to defend that. Yeah, really, what to say, what to say. We internally have talked among the housing director and myself about combining forces with bringing in somebody who could be an implementer, a field person, really out there working, have the finesse and the skills to discuss things with people, encourage, incentivize, you know, move things along, identify problem areas, help make connections. We don't want to call them a code enforcement person because that brings up visions of, you know, somebody passing out tickets, and this is really far different from that. It's really an advocate, it's somebody who understands both the community as well as the intention of the law, and tries to make that real, you know, bring that out and help people get to where we want them to be, whether it's a business entity or a person, you know, trying to take care of their lawn, really work with them to get, to make them understand what we have and where we want to go. In terms of other, I think I was on opportunities. Again, our strong core of professional staff will have an absolute positive impact on the quality of work, and I'm really excited to work with these folks. They've brought just a ton of energy and enthusiasm and technical knowledge into the department, and it's really, it's really been fun. It will enable us to manage our multiple projects on top of each other and simultaneously. And lastly, just continue to explore the use of incentives and encouragement to expand participation in our programs, and use of social media and other technologies to try to get information out in novel and innovative ways, and, you know, continue to sort of, we kind of moved into that realm with SafeGrow, and we want to continue that with all our programs and try to tie them together under a sustainability banner that encourages people to, while they're doing their energy retrofit, make sure they're doing their food waste composting, you know, just everything, plant a tree, use our bulk buy program, just basically wrap all that together and use, use ways to get that information out to the community effectively. And that's, that's my...
I want to say a few words about the basic programs that you've always done that keep going.
Well, I've been told to keep it very short, so I haven't repeated myself.
If you can characterize how well we're taking care of the basics.
Well, a lot of, of course, with that, our programs are continuing. I felt sorry for our sanitation folks who are out there working today. Wednesday was practically a triple route with the collections for both Monday and Tuesday as well as Wednesday, and then trying to collect food waste. So our recycling program continues to be strong and active. The food waste program, I think I mentioned, we're up to 1,500 households participants. We're looking to expand that. About 5% of our waste streams currently being collected is food waste, which is a huge piece. Initially, when we started after the pilot, we think we can get to the 10% to 13% range, so we're really close to that with continued enhancement. We recently did a survey among participants trying to get, you know, more information back about what would it take to get to a next step. We've noticed a little bit of drop-off in participation in the cold months. I think some of that's because, at least myself personally, I don't tend to have as much of that kind of vegetable matter. I guess I eat more packaged foods in the winter, I don't know. Our bulk buy program went very well this fall. We'll be doing it again in the spring. The tree planting program for this year is pretty well wrapped up. We did most of that in December. Our stormwater programs, we had a, we're working currently on a project on Second and Allegheny, a stormwater pipe project. We'll be doing a bunch of biofiltration projects once the spring starts, and we had a meeting just a week ago with our contractor who does most of our concrete and asphalt work to kick off our schedule for ADA sidewalk work and new sidewalk construction. So we have got two sidewalks that are ready to go under construction. We completed Boyd Avenue earlier this fiscal year, so we're anticipating putting in a block on Orchard and a block on Allegheny Avenue. We are having a bit of a challenge working with easement arrangements through the Pinecrest folks for some of their sidewalks, and then we've got additional sidewalks primarily in Ward Two that we're currently working on design with. So those programs are all rolling along.
We knew, we knew the easy sidewalks to do in Pinecrest were taken care of when they came into the city. The tough ones with the easements were kind of bypassed.
Yep. We have a lot of area there where the property boundary is, right behind the curb.
And can you just say a few words about our coordination or the work that's going on with utilities, not on the special projects but on the, on the general system maintenance that they're doing? I know there's a number of projects where they have crews in various parts of the city, and there's, every once in a while, I see email, a flurry of emails from one area or another about some particular problem or a contractor or whatever.
We have had a large WSSC project that's just about completed in the southern portion of the city for Fifth, Sligo Mill Orchard, very large project. That, most of the pipe work is underway, there's still a bit of repair and final restoration work. The permit that the city issued them requires them to mill and pave the streets, so each of the roads, and I think there's about seven or eight streets that they impacted, will be paved come spring. They're currently working on a very challenging project on Little Eastern and Westmoreland Avenues. There's going to be a community meeting March 14th that'll be taking place in this building to bring them together with residents impacted by the project. Washington Gas has got, I think, four different projects, two different contractors currently working in the city. This cold weather has pretty much stopped everything. The project that we don't directly oversee of Washington Gas is on Carroll Avenue. That's certainly the one that most people think of when they think of Washington Gas work. They're doing a bang-up job, very slow, lots of pavement impacts. There's also several other neighborhoods, Garland, Greenwood, Grant Manor, Grant and Lee, and one other neighborhood that are currently impacted by the Washington Gas work. Right now, it's a little difficult to get much responsiveness from them. The cold weather, like I mentioned, has pretty much stopped their work, but they, they will be getting back into things, hopefully wrapping up most of those projects. There's a very, very large WSSC project planned for a year and a half or so from now in Ward Six. Everything but one block of the road in the New Hampshire Gardens, three and a half miles of roadway will be impacted by WSSC, primarily water but also sewer project. So we are far from complete in the...
That was going to be my, the next part of my question was, is this going to continue?
Yeah. One of the other interesting things, and I don't know if I've mentioned this before, the city was required by a change in state law to join and be a member of Miss Utility due to our fiber line along Ritchie Avenue and our, some of our underground conduit for the streetlights that we own and manage. Stormwater is actually exempt, so the fact that we have stormwater infrastructure did not require us to be part of Miss Utility. But we now have the benefit of probably 20 to 40 Miss Utility service requests daily. So everything that's happening in Tecuhpah Park, we actually get notified. We thought it was going to be just limited to our area where we had infrastructure, but we get every, notice of everything in Tecuhpah Park. We have 48 hours to clear it. We get to pay the benefit of a dollar three for every Miss Utility request that we have to respond to or clear. If we're later than 48 hours, we get billed again, so we make a real effort to move those along quickly. So what that means is we have far more information than we ever did before about everything that's going on, from the plumber to the fence installer to the big utility work. So it will actually work to our advantage to some degree, so we'll have much more information now when someone calls and says, "There's some markings on my street, what does that mean?" And before, we'd say, "Well, ah." Now we can, you know, pull up the database and give them a pretty good idea of what that means. So we're still trying to figure out how to most effectively use that information, but it's a ton of information we never had before.
Good, thanks.
What's the restoration plan for Carroll Avenue when Washington Gas has done its work?
They're required to mill and pave, similar requirements that we issue with most utilities. We did get to comment on the permit application prior to SHA issuing it. We don't ever get the final copy of what the permit is, but it's our understanding that pavement restoration will be a requirement there. In terms of timing, it's a, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a guess. One of the contractors that's doing the Carroll Avenue project is also doing a project in the city, so we do have communication with them and continue to kind of inquire every once in a while about, mostly patch maintenance, but we'll also be updated when they're planning to pave.
The Flower Avenue project, regarding Washington Gas installing their new line, where are we in the design process?
Of Washington Gas? Or of... They tell us that they're planning to get it underway summer or fall of this year.
Okay.
So that's about as much detail as we've had. We haven't had any permit applications from them yet, so we don't have any design that we've actually had a chance to look at. We've recently been back in touch with them again, basically asking them the same question, kind of, "How are things going and are they still moving along?" They know the timeline that we're operating under, and so it's really critical that they keep with their pace. We've also discussed options if for some reason they don't move forward, so we'll be able to not let that slow down our, our work.
Okay. And it's my understanding, a constituent brought this to my attention, that some of the funding expires 2016, is that...
The Fish and Wildlife Federation money is the money that was supposed to be spent, I think, by mid-2016. We will ask for an extension once the deadline timeframe for asking for extension comes up. That was part of our meeting today, you know, just letting them know we're actively working on the project. Here's the reasons it slowed down. It's a very common occurrence, particularly with programs that you're still in design when you request your funding. So there wasn't any concern in terms of a delay. The other interesting portion of that project, just like the CDBG project, which has a deadline of June 15th to be completed, so we'll move ahead with that. Even though it's part of the comprehensive program, it's a piece we can separate out. Same could be said for the Fish and Wildlife Federation money, it's bioretention construction, so we could go ahead and build those bioretention facilities and await the rest of the project if for some reason we had to complete them out of sequence with the rest of the work. So, you know, we have that option as well.
Okay. The website, is it being updated? Is RKK...
We're currently waiting for new site plans before we update it. We're currently in mandatory referral with Park and Planning on the project, so we've submitted those, we want to get their comments, make any changes to the plan, and then the 60% plans will be updated to the website. We've been basically waiting till that process completes before we go through the update.
And do you have an estimate when that would happen?
We're expecting to get comments back, really any time, depending on the length and the number of the comments that may, you know, may take a while to respond, but I would think that in March and April, we should have that completed and updated.
And finally, on Garland, did you see the permit for Washington Gas doing the work? Are they supposed to replace the sidewalk? Do we have to do that, or...
They have to do, repair any sidewalk where they do their asphalt patch currently, where they had to excavate or do a keyhole to access their line. They'll be required to replace the concrete.
Okay. I lied, I have one more question. Maplewood, the sidewalk that some constituents are requesting because the traffic's going to be pushed through the street because of the Carroll Avenue Bridge closure, do you, is that in FY16 budget? Have you even considered that, or...
I don't think I'm aware of the request. We don't have it on our list of sidewalk requests. We currently have 10 sidewalks that are in one stage or another that doesn't include Maplewood at this point.
Okay. Is it too late that we, for us, to do that, or, because this would be like a special case?
We don't have conditions developed yet for, you know, hopping one thing to the front of the line. That's something that the council could certainly discuss. One of the things we'd want to take a look at is if there's sidewalk on one side of the street at least, or if there's no sidewalks on either side of the street, that would be a concern. There's also issues of topography, whether a sidewalk would actually narrow the road versus widen it. If it looked like it was going to narrow the road, wouldn't be a good idea to do prior to that project. State Highway indicated that they're still anticipating a start date of, you know, midsummer for their project, though the actual bridge closer wouldn't happen to four to six months after that, so we're looking at the end of this year, early next year before the closure would actually occur. So we do have 10 months or so to make any concrete changes, if it was determined that that was an emergency. We also have another meeting coming up, the Carroll and Old Carroll Neighborhood for the Carroll Avenue Bridge. We've had nine meetings that the city has coordinated. I think other residents have also organized some, and that's on your agenda for either the second or ninth?
I think it's the second.
To kind of take a look at everything that's come up so far, and for primarily the council to determine how you want to handle temporary traffic requests, whether we're going to establish a new process to deal with those temporary requests, or what we're going to do to proceed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I have a follow-up question on the Carroll Avenue Bridge closing. Meetings, residents have, I wanted to send thank yous because residents were very happy to have those meetings. Some of them have requested notes from the meetings, and I didn't know if that was something you all were compiling to present to council in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I have my handwritten notes from each of the meetings, and hopefully we'll have an opportunity to sort of chat amongst us to make sure I have everything that you guys have, and we'll just kind of compile it. Haven't really figured out whether we're going to list it street by street or just the compendium of everything. Take a look at kind of which way seems to help organize our thoughts primarily. But, I mean, people should just email me if they have particular interests, and I'd be happy to tell, you know, repeat or photocopy what I've got, and if they've got other things that they want to have included, just to let me know.
Great. And then one other question. Any other news about the crosswalk on Carroll Avenue from in front of the Co-op to Grant Avenue?
We were actually supposed to be, anticipated getting into a pre-construction meeting with the contractor. The contract's been let, State Highway has made a selection. They were going to be having the contractor onsite to just do a kind of a walkthrough. I'm guessing that temperatures and cold weather has delayed that, but we could, you know, definitely follow up with State Highway and see what's happening with that.
On the WSSC project on, in my, in New Hampshire Gardens, do, what is, we haven't had any information from anybody since a community meeting, I guess it was in December, where on a few days after that, the WSSC representative who seemed to be pretty competent and knowledgeable resigned, went away, and so...
Took another job.
Took another job, which is the way things go. What do we know? I mean, I, in terms of the start date...
It's currently in design development. Really nothing that specific as start date at this point. They did all the boring and utility locating and testing that they were going to do to start their design process, so they have hired a design engineering firm that's developing the design. Because it's such a large project, I imagine that could fully take six to eight months just of design.
We've been operating under the, what we'd been told was that the work would start this spring, but...
In 2015.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can follow up with them. We haven't seen design drawings yet. We usually get permit drawings prior to that, and then usually a project starts within six months or so of that. So I would be surprised if it would be starting this spring. I was thinking it was 2016, was my, my recollection, but I can follow back up.
Yeah, please do, so I can just keep on top of it, so we know what to expect. You talk here under challenges, something you didn't actually address, the age and size of some city facilities continues to be a challenge as functions change, needs for storage, and additional staffing increase. What are you referring to there?
We've got a lot of, lot of facility use issues that we're currently looking at, and we would anticipate more coming. You've already heard from the library about that design process and envisioning process. We've been working, hopefully getting started soon with funds in the budget this year for police area renovations, including close-in of a portion or all of the atrium. We had that structural engineering study done in the last fiscal year, which showed that it was feasible and possible to do that, and so the next step is to bring the architectural firm back in to take a look at the police level, how to optimize space, particularly for dispatch, move out into that portion of the building. There's also some needs for adjustments and arrangements in this, in this building. We're currently looking at a design for the finance office. Currently, all the finance staff weren't able to be located within the finance office. So we, we have a design that I think is pretty well final from the architect's point of view. We've internally been looking at that. It mostly will incorporate more functional furnishings and modules for the office arrangements themselves to fit more people into the existing space. So that's, that's a project that has been identified and has gone through the development process. There's also additional work that's been taking place, both through Housing, HCD, and the Rec Department related to the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center, and you all will be hearing details of that. We haven't been involved in that project, but I know that's one that's underway.
Right.
And then lastly, we have Phase Two of the Public Works Facility. Only two-thirds of the building was addressed, so we still have sections of the building that have not been renovated at all. So that's just on the top of my head, and Suzie may know of others, but that, that's the list of, of projects that...
That's quite enough.
Yeah. Yep. You know, buildings are like people, they just sort of slowly fall apart. We just get older and older and require more space, yeah.
Darrell, a few questions and comments. On the bioretention, if there are any, and the bioretention that I'm most familiar with are the little cutaways to curbs and the spaces next to streets. If there are any studies that describe the effectiveness of those, so just sort of documentation, I'd appreciate looking at them.
Yeah, yeah. We actually are using state documents relative to phosphorus nitrogen and sediment uptake from those facilities. So they have had some analysis done, and the state, through its watershed implementation program, does allocate certain effectiveness measures relative to those. I don't know that information on the top of my head, but we can certainly share it with you. And the city engineer is kind of, you know, that's his bailiwick, so he, he's aware of it. In our annual WIP implementation plan, we submit information that relates to the treatment acres and what we're assuming, you know, reductions in phosphorus and nitrogen. We're primarily operating under, our plan is to provide treatment for 20% of the existing pervious... pervy, impervious area of the city as our method towards, uh, reaching the requirements in the state, uh, relative to, um, quality of water runoff improvement, and then couple that with some additional items, including our street sweeping program, our tree planting program, and our stream, uh, restoration, as the ways that we're gonna accomplish, um, what we need to. I don't know if I, it made it through in this, uh, evolution of the slides, but, uh, we continue to feel that we're gonna be well in advance of the state mandated twenty twenty-five.
You said twenty twenty in the document.
Yeah.
Um, the, um, a couple of things on that. One, I think it would be good to try to convert, given how prevalent these now are in neighborhoods, to get, give people a sense of how effective they are.
Mm-hmm.
Try to figure out what, you know, removing chicken waste from a farm does, and sort of put our, our work in comparison to something.
Mm-hmm.
Um, something, and that's not a great example of something people can relate to, unless they're from the eastern shore, but maybe there are other examples of how we reduce waste, nitrogen, phosphorus, um, potassium waste, and...
Or maybe how much chicken waste, we have to deal with them to come apart.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there's that, too.
The second associated part of this is that, um, the McLaughlin School has a, has a piped stream or spring of some sort, and so figuring out what the contribution of daylighting, that, or even creating a wetland area would be in terms of nitrogen and phosphorus reduction, and whether it would be cost competitive to, uh, to other bio-retention, um, is just an area of interest.
Yeah, that's gonna be a real challenge. It's actually something that we have all over the city. Uh, most of the historic streams and creeks have been trenched and tunneled and piped, and so most of what was originally, you know, stream flow is now piped stormwater flow, um, and most of our discharges, uh, into the Anacostia, uh, from our end are all stormwater-based.
Yeah. Yeah, I would think that the, the stream that comes just up to here behind Maple would be another good example of a long stretch that's all forested, where the stream is, you know, moving wasteful water fast down instead of allowing some more percolat- percolation.
We actually had a big study of that a few years ago.
If you could dig that up, I'd be interested in looking at it. Um, on the NIFWIF, just briefly, I'd say that my guess is that the money is five-year money from EPA, in which case they'll give you an extension for up to five years from the date of award. Speaking from past experience, that's generally what they can do, but, um, see, see what you get. Uh, you mentioned the implementation of Safegrow, polystyrene and, and multifamily recycling programs, and, um, in general, my, my philosophy on this budget is that we have, uh, we believe we have some staff compensation needs, and from, you know, my perspective, and I'm willing to try to advocate, uh, this way with constituents, to try to get people used to the idea of not expanding anything else in the budget to address that need. So, having the trade-off, you know, fall on residents, that the services are not gonna grow in exchange to fairly compensate staff. Um, so, in terms of more hires or big capital projects, that's generally the philosophy that I'm trying to, um, communicate to constituents. And I say, I say that in reference to these three programs, because I guess, even regardless of that, I wonder if a positive step to do, given that they're all new programs, isn't like we're doing with parking, try to get some baseline assessment of where we are today, so subsample the multifamily apartment buildings and figure out what percent do recycling now, maybe it's zero, maybe it's five percent.
Mm-hmm.
And then, after the policy goes into place without staffing extensive, costly, in other words, um, outreach efforts, figure out whether we get ten or twenty, or for thirty or forty percent adoption, and the same thing would apply to any of these policies. So essentially, what do we get in terms of a, a boost in performance under these three areas, just simply by putting the policy into place? We could test that, and we could collect data on it and say, well, simply the legislative action creates this, this much benefit and that, the written communication. And then staffing, we could then say, well, what's our goal for staffing? Our goal for staffing is to get from thirty percent adoption to sixty percent adoption, and we could then test our staffing strategies. So, I mean, I think there's a logical, there's a, a strategic reason to, to play this out over two years or three years, regardless of the budgetary concerns, um, and even if we do staff it, I'd still hope that we could do some baseline data collection before.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
At this point, a lot of the baseline information we have is, is self-reported, you know, with, uh, particularly with multifamily. Uh, we're looking at using the annual licensing application as a way to gather information, but it would be self-reported information. If we actually wanted to do real field stuff, um, you know, we would need to figure out who and how to do that.
I mean, it could even be you, you guys select random samples of buildings or tenants, and ask us to go visit those tenants. There are the set of us that all have constituents that we need to, excuses to visit anyway. That's it for me.
And if I could just follow up on one thing that I thought of when Councilmember Mail was going through various things. Um, my sense is that we're not gonna have any requirements under an MS four permit for a while, 'cause they're still dealing with the, with the phase one, uh, permities, and they're starting to even revise those and go back around again. There's a bunch that they haven't issued, so that they're not gonna get to us in the second tier for a while. Is that direct? Is that what you've heard?
I think that's probably a little, a pretty logical expectation. Uh, I don't think we've gotten comments back from our biannual reports, the last two, um, so yeah, well, as a municipality, smaller municipality, we're not in their top tier of, of, um, you know, interactions.
Right, so we won't have the headache of dealing with that for a while.
Well, we're still proceeding as if we're meeting the requirements and doing our reporting.
Yeah, we're doing everything we need to do, but we're not having to deal with all of the formal requirements and the back and forth and dragging that out over some years.
I just had one, one, five, another question, and that has to do with the, the challenge that you said you're facing with, we have these new, the Safegrow law, the polystyrene ban, and the multifamily recycling. Um, and of those, there, there's these educational components to get people aware of, and you characterize it as, you know, out there selling these programs and trying to get people to cooperate, as well as just providing information. And I'm just sort of wondering if it makes any sense for us to be thinking of trying to get volunteer people to help align themselves with, uh, one of these, uh, programs, uh, to, 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 to do that kind of stuff, because I do think Tacoma Park residents, just by virtue of being residents, uh, could be in a very strong position to be persuasive, particularly if they're not salaried city employees or, or consultants we've hired from the outside that nobody knows. Um, I mean, you know, the, I'm thinking of like with the lifelong Tacoma program, we've got Wolfgang, who's been doing so much work on behalf of the city, and there's not a lot of, necessarily a lot of people who have that time, ability to commit time, but it just seems to me that there might be some people that we could harness to really help us, uh, move these, uh, the, the educational and the selling aspects of these things along without taxing our staffs quite so much.
Well, volunteers have always and continue to do amazing things. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to go up to the site of the future dog park, but the work that they did over Martin Luther King birthday was absolutely mind-blowing. Uh, took us practically a day and six guys to remove everything that they pulled out of, of the, the woods. Uh, so volunteers do absolutely fabulous work, no doubt about it. One of the challenges is we have i- areas where we're intending to use volunteers, our sustainable energy action plans, our neighborhood energy challenges. We're planning to tap into and harness volunteers and multifamily and seniors, and we're gonna be going for it, so kind of that, we've got an intention as, and a, and a goal with the two-year focus on that project. The only way we're gonna be able to accomplish it is through volunteers, interns, and our staff. Uh, so that's gonna be, uh, really maximizing, uh, our use of volunteers in that regard. With the other programs, uh, you, you typically have to have something set up and established for them to then go out and develop. Um, it also, depending on the issue, can be challenging, you know. I, I don't know that people would wanna go up to their neighbor and inform them of the Safegrow law. Um, you know, those kinds of things may, may be a little more, more difficult, but, uh, there's also the community and the environment that has been very active and interested in things. I think their focus these days is natural resource management and trees is what I'm hearing, in addition to the energy. So, some of those, some of those volunteer opportunities will no doubt be tapped into and captured.
Do you see a need, or would, would it be useful to, for us to be thinking about a volunteer coordinator?
Well, I've heard that.
Because obviously, training, people solicit, you know, get recruiting and, and training and then monitoring, somebody's gotta do that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I mean, volunteers don't, I mean, they're just not completely free.
Mm-hmm. No, they require a lot of care and feeding, uh, way beyond my, uh, knowledge and ability to do, so yeah, I would say that's, um, something on the table as well as others.
Lots of options we're looking at, I'm not sure what, what we're gonna come forward with.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
And, like you.
George.
Covers Public Works.
And we'll move to Lifelong Tacoma. And I put, just want you to know, I put Daryl first because she has kind of the biggest area, so I just appreciate the questions, um, and we'll move right along.
Welcome, Ms. Marsha.
Hello, thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Okay.
You're in control, the button's there.
Alrighty, uh, I haven't used this one before.
Just, just the page down, or whichever.
Oh, okay, yeah. Got it, oh, that was easy, okay. All right, um, Lifelong Tacoma Program, I'm not gonna read through the mission then, uh, everyone can read that unless somebody wants me to. Um, so I will jump to successes. Uh, well, that's measurement, sorry, okay. So, as far as successes or best practices, I'd like to speak about the first annual Lifelong Tacoma Day event. Um, there was success in, in different ways. One was success in terms of engagement of residents for turnout and, um, receiving, uh, some of the offerings there. The other one was success in terms of leveraging, um, volunteers to provide much-needed support for the program. Uh, another best practice and success is community partnerships. Um, Lifelong Tacoma has been around for eleven months, and in that amount of time, has really been able to harness, um, a lot of volunteer support. Um, some of the community partnerships and volunteer support was through Difference Makers, um, which, uh, was a partnership between Lifelong Tacoma and Tacoma Park Middle School. Um, that was a, a snow removal pilot called Snow Angels, um, and I can talk more about that if you guys have questions and you have the information.
We've talked about that a good bit recently.
Okay, good, wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Uh, Tacoma Park Village, making some roadways with Wolfgang Merkner, and, um, bringing new resources, um, uh, through a, a partnership, through a collaborative partnership with the village. Victory Towers, surveying and polling, uh, the residents in Victory Towers, it's one of the examples, as well as Franklin, um, and looking at what gaps in resources, interests, and needs they may have, and bringing some of those resources to the seniors living in apartments. Um, Capital City Cheesecake, uh, I have met and have begun, um, a collaborative partnership with Capital City Cheesecake as a pilot for partnering with businesses to expand resources. Um, one of the things that we're doing is, um, there will be a rollout late spring, early summer, for a, um, Lifelong Appreciation Day. They have agreed, because seniors have limited budgets, to put together menu of discounted items that seniors would be able to use, and also they've offered to, uh, provide space for meetings for seniors, um, on specific topics. So, um, they also have, um, provided donations, food donations, gift cards, and are also going to be providing food donations for seniors that are discharged from hospitals and rehabilitation centers as a supportive gesture. Um, Youth Collaborative, I have been working with Man Up and Cheer, um, and looking at ways that I can help support the youth collaborative through, um, outreach to employers, which may be the same employers that I may be doing outreach for, for seniors that are in need of employment, and also looking at creative ways to, um, partner seniors with youth, particularly those that are at risk for mentorship opportunities. Trends and best practices, intergenerational connectivity, um, there's been a focus on age-friendly, um, communities, and looking at ways that that could be accomplished in the city of Tacoma Park. Um, one of the, uh, areas also under trends is community volunteerism that was brought up. Um, I see a lot of opportunity for, uh, seniors, as well as people of all ages, um, especially youth, to provide supportive services, not only to each other, like through the snow removal pilot, but to different, um, city programs and, uh, services, um, and that's other conversation. Um, intergenerational community outreach, um, so the focus for the Lifelong Tacoma Program, um, my understanding was when it was first developed, is looking at how there can be certain resources for people of a certain age or a certain, um, level of functioning or ability. What I've been finding in feedback from the seniors from the first annual Tacoma, um, Lifelong Tacoma Day event, as well as polling and surveys, is they don't particularly, residents don't particularly feel that it's beneficial or positive to be singled out from the rest of the pack because they're a certain age, or because they have certain abilities. So, instead, there's more of a trend at looking at needs across the boards for residents as opposed to singling people out according to age. Um, trends in senior resident requests, so there's been, um, you know, still polling continues, outreach continues, conversations continue, surveys continue, and these are some of the areas where there have been, um, stronger senior resident requests over the last six months that I wanted to share with you, so that you have an update on what's in the minds of residents in terms of their needs, particularly for that demographic. Opportunities and challenges, there's just one of me, and I work a very limited schedule, Tuesday through Thursday, nine to four, and there is such a big need. Um, anytime that there is an event, there is outreach, I see an uptick in requests. From when I first started, um, in April, there were one to three requests a week, and currently, there's about three requests on average a day, and I see that only increasing because of the number of seniors. With the snow removal pilot, um, information has been going out through the student volunteers, and seniors have been calling in and making requests on other kinds of services offered through Lifelong Tacoma, so that's a big challenge. Um, how do we meet the need? Limited funds for contractual support, um, and then database. So, people are contacting me, they're calling me, they're writing me, they're making their requests known face-to-face. I am responding, uh, via email, uh, I'm responding face-to-face, I am responding over the phone. However, I feel that it would be better to support the seniors and more uniform if I had a database to do so. That way, if someone calls and it's a, a repeat customer, so to speak, I'll be able to go back, pull up, you know, the conversation, or at least pull up something that had occurred, what was the request? Where did the referral come from? Because I get referrals from different sources, nonprofits, faith-based, community, neighbor requests, so I feel that that would be better, um, for me to track. Um, it also would help me with, um, increase in growth, um, as well as quality assurance, being able to circle back around to individuals when I have a little downtime and say, "So I referred you to Montgomery County Aging and Disability Resources, how'd that go? Did you get the help that you needed? Were there any challenges with that?" So it provides me with the opportunity to follow up and have conversations on both sides with, um, the, the resource that I refer them to, as well as the individual. Uh, opportunities going forward, there is great interest within the community, which is a great thing. Um, there's increasing requests for assistance, and as I mentioned to you, there's been a huge uptick for requests. Since September of twenty fourteen, there's been, um, about two hundred and twenty-five requests for assistance. So, that may not seem like a lot, I don't know, that's, what, about five months? However, I'm also going out and I'm developing community partnerships and collaborations. Um, I'm also sitting on the Commission on Aging to learn about any trends and needs and resources that are coming along, so I'm staying abreast and I'm advocating for the city of Tacoma Park residents. Um, I'm also, uh, partnering with other departments internally, like, um, Public Works with environmental sustainability and their energy challenge, to look at how can we creatively, um, get youth as well as seniors on board with these kinds of things, and how can we streamline our outreach efforts, so that when I'm out, I can provide a senior or resident, uh, with information not only on, um, Lifelong Tacoma, but also on the energy challenge. So, looking at different creative ways, I can work together with other departments to include the police, um, to include housing, uh, to include the library or other, uh, departments within Tacoma Park. Um, volunteer support and access to, uh, subsidized volunteer- Volunteer Support and Access to Subsidized Volunteer Program. I have learned that through Volunteer Maryland, there is an opportunity for cities or nonprofits to gain access to a volunteer coordinator, and it would be subsidized. I think this would be a great advantage to the city of Tacoma Park, and I think that it's one that would be very useful, you know, to look at, discuss, and possibly, you know, decide to implement, but I leave that to you all. So that is my spiel. I hope I did good on time. Does anybody have any questions?
I want to turn to Councilmember Grimes because I want him to ask about the database.
Well, I wasn't, but I will. Well, what I'm, I mean, this all sounds great to me, and it's wonderful that you're so busy.
I am, yes.
So I'm curious. Are you tracking grant opportunities that might fund particular projects or focus on particular populations or particular types of service that could, not, my thought isn't to pay for what you're doing, but to allow the expansion of what you're doing. You mentioned limited funds for contractors. You mentioned the limited hours that you have.
Yes.
Grant opportunities, and can you use assistance there?
I have been researching them. My research has primarily been in support of the village of Tacoma Park. However, as I have become more busy and more engaged with community partners, I have been looking at opportunities to apply for grants through Tacoma Park Foundation, through, you know, Montgomery County, the funds that are available. So yes, that is definitely an opportunity that I have begun looking at and will continue to do.
The Tacoma Foundation is ramping up to go to another level of fundraising and could be potential source. I do note that on the village front, the Silver Spring Village recently hired an executive director who happens to be the wife of the state attorney general. And Shepherd Park Village is looking for a coordinator. I know our village, I was involved in a discussion, set the membership cost extremely low.
Yes.
And the target there is to build membership and then potentially to raise that amount, allowing for need, of course, to pay for some of the things maybe that you're doing now. So, you know, that's all kind of maybe in the works there. Yeah, the database, I do, I was thinking there surely are systems out there, CRM, Customer Relationship Management Systems, that can handle this kind of interactions that are tailored toward the kind of situation that you're in here, public administration and all of that. Maybe you've looked into that kind of thing?
Yeah, well, Montgomery County Government, they are piloting a new database. And so I had some conversations with Emily Rosenberg, who is over, you know, their database and polls reports. And I understand that because it's a pilot, it will be years before something like that could potentially be rolled out to the cities. But that's something that I'd love to have because I see that there could be great opportunities having an interface between city Tacoma Park, as well as Montgomery County Government, for communication as well as for extrapolating reports.
We're looking at some other options on different kinds of databases that are especially appropriate for this population.
Yes.
Yeah, well, thanks.
Are there people who have similar jobs to you in this region?
There are. I think that Tacoma Park, as well as other cities, are kind of unique. Green Belt has kind of, sort of, a similar thing, only I would say it's different and actually kind of very different because they have a social services department. And so that lends itself to differences and different ways of reporting and measuring and supporting residents because they have an established social services department, yes.
And I was asking because I was thinking about, well, gee, it's good to call on resources in Tacoma Park, but if we're looking for various types of resources and funding and opportunities, it's great to look to Montgomery County, since we pay a lot of taxes and it would be nice to get some things back.
I agree.
And thinking about other, I thought, gee, this is the type of thing that Gaithersburg might have, or if the county has something similar, kind of pulling from those resources that we don't necessarily have to directly pay for. And then I expanded my thinking that if there were other people who have similar-type jobs, whether there's a way to kind of pull people together at the council of governments or some other way to have, be able to piggyback on other people's work.
Right. No, I understand. So Green Belt, which I said is kind of sort of the closest that I can compare to, they have a person who had started kind of on a pilot basis when they had first started their program, but that person was working full-time from the beginning. So there are some differences in terms of resources and supports they have and that I have, but I will continue to look for additional supports. I think having volunteers and having a volunteer coordinator, even if it's subsidized, will provide that greater level of support and those tentacles out into the community so that, you know, there's not just one, there's many. So that is why I brought that up.
If I could follow up too. The kinds of services and connections that Karen is working with are also being provided to different extents by different kinds of organizations. AARP has quite a strong program that they've been modeling in different communities. Even the American Planning Association has a whole, you know, age-appropriate communities effort with a lot of outreach on that. So it may not be exact model, but there's some interesting connections that we've been, we certainly make those connections and use their materials when we can. But I think everything's a little bit new, and it's so in one sense, you know, we may help create an organization of some kind as we move forward.
And also, the Jewish Council on Aging has acquired inter-ages. And their focus is on intergenerational connectivity, and it's also focused on volunteerism. So there are things happening, and people are finding creative ways. But I think that volunteerism is one way, that people are looking to get the job done, so. And it, you know, it saves money. You know, I go to these meetings and all I hear is that, you know, the state of Maryland is decreasing, you know, their budget. They just don't have money for things. So this is a way to be able to provide some services and some resources that would not otherwise be provided by, you know, harnessing and leveraging the residents who are interested and wanting to help, so.
Karen, can you talk more about the youth collaborative?
Sure.
So I understand that, you know, Brandon's going to roll out something this summer. Will the people in, working with you, will they be part of it? Will they actually be mentoring this summer? Will you be able to stand up something so that you can give council report and show how many mentors we were able to place with the kids? So that they don't just go to the jobs, but, you know, they can talk to somebody, build some soft skills, build a network, all these other things that are important.
Yes, I think it depends at the pace in which Brandon moves forward. Because I know that he's got a lot of, he just assumed another program that he's working on. He'd shared with me. I see more readily where I can be supportive in the area of finding potential employers and doing outreach in that regard, because I'm already doing outreach to community partners as part of what I do. And as I shared, there are seniors that are seeking employment too. So I can kind of kill two birds with one stone. I hate that term. More like grow two trees with one seed. But I think that that's a way that makes sense, that I can make, I can have an impact and I can support what he's doing. Down the road, I most definitely, I think once, you know, the career fear is over and the employment winds down, I think that will be a time for Brandon and I to have more direct conversations on how can we work together on building out a mentoring program or support. I think with the snow shoveling pilot, that there are opportunities for middle school students to indirectly develop mentoring opportunities with the seniors as the relationships develop. And I'm hoping that it won't just be, you know, show up, shovel some snow, and then move on to the next house. I'm hoping that organically, over time, bless you, and not necessarily with just snow removal, but other opportunities. The students and their facilitator are very interested in sitting on the Second Annual Lifelong Tacoma Day Planning Committee. The focus is going to be inter-aging. So it's about creating that intergenerational connectivity. So I think there's a lot of opportunities there for mentorship, not just for at-youth risk, which I think there's a very strong need, but just for youth in general in Tacoma Park.
Are you finding food insecurity an issue?
Food insecurity? I'd have to say not, not really. I don't have that listed because that's not what I'm hearing. It seems like there are so many different kinds of food resources in Tacoma Park that I don't think that's the case. I think it may be more when people are hospitalized and they're leaving the hospital and they've never been in this situation before where they're too weak or frail to be able to prepare a meal. I think that may be a big need, or there may be, I don't know if I'd call it insecurity. I'd call it maybe lack of knowledge of resources. Yeah, yeah, in that particular instance.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Karen. I have heard the, said that Tacoma Park has a disproportionate share of so-called, for lack of a better word, seniors in living here. And perhaps that's alleged or said because we have a lot of tall, you know, high-rise buildings that can accommodate older people and that sort of thing. But I am curious to know what the, what the facts actually show with regard to, I don't know, what, the census uses the cohort of 65 and older, I believe. To what, what does the facts of that matter? Do you know?
I do, and I presented on that the first time, and I don't remember. I think that instead, I took the numbers of 55-plus, since that was the focus. And I am going to say that it was about a quarter of the residents of Tacoma Park that were in that age group, but I can get back to you and confirm that.
We can get, we can certainly get the census numbers from 2010. We do have real problems with demographics in between censuses. Because we're such a small community and the American Community Survey is such a wide variation on its accuracy. But ages we're a little bit better on than some other kind of characteristics.
Some of the arguments around the need for the purple line quoted, or there were people quoting the fact, facts that this, that there was a lot of elderly people that lived in this part of the county. I have no idea whether that's true or not. It could very well be true. And the other comment I really wanted to make, and this is something that you and I have actually had conversations about, is that the fact that we define the group that you're needing to pay attention to as those 55 and older, kind of stretches the definition of senior. Because I know a lot of people who would be that age, who wouldn't think of themselves as being seniors, or might just think of themselves as finally figuring out what it is they want to do when they grow up.
Right.
And I wonder if that doesn't cause us to be spreading our resources too thinly. I mean, that, the, as you mentioned earlier, through your polling, you found that people of a certain age group don't want to be defined by their age.
Well, in general.
In general.
Yeah, not of a certain age group.
And, well, you know, we talk about the baby boomers and all of that, but my experience of being in that milieu is that, you know, people, say, who are in their 70s can be, range from people who are looking for career opportunities or professional growth, doing research, people who are, you know, focused on purely, you know, ranging from there to people who are focused on retirement, people who are disabled and very needy. It can run the enormous gamut. And I just, I just think that when we talk about seniors, every decade is a whole different story.
Right.
I mean, you know, I meet people these days who are well into their 80s. They're running on all eight cylinders, and it's just, it's just really naive of us to sort of be thinking that, oh, well, people of, once you're 65, you're sort of in this, in this bucket of people.
Right, generalized group.
It just, you know, it's no more, it doesn't make any sense. And I'm hoping that, and this is really not a question so much as an observation, that at some point in time, we can just sort of sort people on different, by different needs as opposed to ages.
Yes, I agree, and that is one of the goals. And I see there's a great opportunity for that with developing more of intergenerational connectivity. It's exactly that. It's looking at what are the needs of residents as opposed to what are the ages or the levels of abilities. That's correct, yeah.
Good.
Hi, Terry.
Hi. Thank you for this discussion. You do so much work. Do it in the dark sometimes. We don't get to hear what all you're working on, and appreciate this. I wondered if you reached out to any other types of volunteer organizations to see if maybe they have some database or infrastructure help. I think of Teach for America is one that does a lot of volunteer organizing. Maybe they have a database they'd be willing to share with you.
I've reached out to one so far, and that is Volunteer Arlington, since I live in Arlington. I thought, let me find out what they're doing. And they use Truist for theirs, but that's specific to volunteer database. I guess what might be helpful is if I could have a database that could be used for requests for assistance, and then on the other side, volunteers, you know. So if there was a database that could be that flexible, that I could use and separate out for both those purposes.
Yeah, that was where I thought Teach for America might be one that does it. And it's not a municipality, but it does a lot of volunteer organizing.
Right, right.
And then I would just call your attention to a report on volunteerism that's published by the ICMA.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
And we're going to do library next?
We're going to do library next.
Which is behind police in your bag. Welcome, Ms. Robbins.
I need to switch chairs here. Thank you. Whoops.
Just keep going.
Is it not?
It went.
Okay, I guess, I guess it's out of order. So just go, just go pass through police real quick. There we go.
There we go. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to skip over the mission and begin with some discussion of measures of success. We have many ways to measure our success. In 2014, or fiscal year 14, we had 309 library programs with a total attendance of more than 14,000. In the same year, patrons logged on to over 25,000 computer sessions for a total of 17,000 hours. This was the highest level of use we've had on the public computers in the past three years. years. Our needs assessment, which I've discussed before, contained 252 survey responses and seven focus groups. In October and December of 2014, we had two public meetings around the library space planning initiative. These shows showed that our users valued us as a neighborhood library and as distinct from other libraries around us because of the depth and breadth of our collections and as an inviting place for family visits. Lastly, all library staff interact with the public on a daily basis. Projects and achievements. You've already heard a great deal recently about the space planning with Luke Meyer Partnership, so I won't, I won't reiterate that. You also know that we have recently entered into a contract for a new integrated library system. Briefly, this will involve circulation functions and catalog and database management. It'll provide library users with greater control over their accounts than they have now, and will include features such as cover integration, that is, book cover integration, reading lists, and a mobile, mobile interface, and an aesthetically pleasing and functional catalog. A great deal more from the user's point of view than they have now. Sunday hours and programs continue to be popular. We've had an average circulation of about 370 books each Sunday for the past six months. We have Lego craft or book-oriented programs for kids nearly every Sunday. And in the computer center, we have discussions around the MOOCs, the massive open online class discussions for adults. We have that every Sunday. Through our partnership with Politics and Pros, we have a variety of children's programs, I mean, I'm sorry, children's, authors and illustrators, including Newberry, Caldecott, and National Book Award winners. We also have eight more scheduled for mid-March through mid-May, including a visit by Dave Barry on May 6th.
And on your calendars.
Yeah.
Get a seat.
Yeah. We've also had some programs by local authors in the library. We are acquiring more and more digital resources. These are accessible on any computer with a Tacoma Park library card. Streaming digital resources this year are most notably, I would mention Star Walk for Kids. This is quality fiction and nonfiction for ages preschool through middle school. For us, collection assessment is the process of evaluating and removing worn outdated or unused books from our collection. We've weeded about 6,000 books in 2014. This is an ongoing evaluation of the collections, and first of all, it was an important part of our needs assessment. It was a recommendation, and it's a way to make wanted materials more accessible and more pertinent in our collection. Moving on to trends and best practices, public libraries are becoming places for community gathering and engagement, that is, libraries with flexible and non-traditional spaces for uses and events of different types and sizes, and also furnishings that are easily movable and support different kinds of activities. A 21st century library collection emphasizes the most in-demand fiction and nonfiction, and includes eBooks and digital content resources. We have a growing number of digital reference resources and other tools that require frequent updating, such as study guides, career guides, travel guides, and so forth. We also have streaming books for various ages and language learning tools. As far as computer access and technology, the Koha software that is part of our new Bywater Integrated Library System will allow people to access their accounts and control many functions from home, and access our catalog on smartphones and tablets. It is also a web-based solution hosted in the cloud. Challenges. The library building is 60, 60 years old, that pretty much speaks for itself. We have no dedicated space for programs, young adult materials, group study, or adequate staff space. Residents support, have expressed support for the library as a valued local resource in the needs assessment that was published at the end of 2014. Residents also support Sunday hours in the library and the computer center. Library card registration increased by more than 14% in fiscal year 14. Residents have expressed a desire for library building improvements, and we have a staff that can work together to effect and support change. So now I'd like to entertain your questions, or comments.
They know everything about libraries.
We've seen a lot lately.
You had a lot of, a lot of information about libraries.
That's right.
And I'm encouraged that there are a lot of ways in which you're kind of moving beyond what people always think of as traditional library and, you know, physical books, and it's a lot more digital and that there's a lot more, an enhanced interface for users.
Right, yes, that's true. The movement to digital resources is partly because they take up less space, and you can actually update them on a more frequent basis more easily. So, yeah, all libraries are going that way, and that's a big advantage for us.
I think, just as a comment, that, you know, the measures of your success and the support from the community clarifies any doubt as to whether or not our library is needed or not. Because I think there's been some thought that, oh, well, with the new Silver Spring Library and the growth and expansion of the county thing, is that there, we might be eclipsed, but I see just the opposite. It sounds to me like, for whatever, for a lot of reasons, no doubt, that there is a huge reliance on our library as a favored institution here, that people really count. I know a member of my household darkens the door of the library about every two weeks, you know, with armloads of books. And so it's, and I'm sure she's not alone in that regard. So I, it just seems to me that I'm thoroughly convinced of the value of our, and our need to expand the library and continue to upgrade its functions.
Thank you. I think people really do perceive us as intrinsically different from the libraries around us, not necessarily better or worse, just different because we are perceived as a community resource. There was a questionnaire that was handed out at the first public meeting during the space planning initiative, and people responded that they didn't want our book collection to be decreased to the point where we became a library of computers, and, you know, many fewer books. They really valued the kind of collection we had, they valued the place, the fact that people could bring their families to read in the library, to attend programs. It was, it was a much more inviting place. You know, and actually, we heard really recently from a librarian who lives in Tacoma Park. She works at the Martin Luther King Library, and she was pleased by the fact that in our children's room, we separate the computers from the books, because they don't do that in the DC libraries, apparently. And once you get computers in a room, that's all kids want to do, and it tends to take away from, it devalues the books in a way, because it takes away from, you know, the motivation to use them and to investigate them. So it was interesting.
Thanks very much.
We'll make it fast.
Yep, thank you.
Forgive me, it's been one month since my, oh, sorry. My last confession.
You're Catholic.
Yeah, can't you tell? It's O Goldberg. Anyway, I'm not going to read the mission statement, although it has changed, I encourage you to read it.
You gotta get to the right page.
Yeah.
You gotta back through the library.
That's right. She.
Keep going.
I see we're recruiting at this age now?
Yeah, there you go. Well, that's a whole mentorship program, right?
Okay, well, first of all, on the front cover page, one of the things, staffing has been one of our biggest challenges. We've had 10 new officers hired in two and a half years, and actually about three more before that, just before I got here, and five new civilian staff. That includes dispatchers, crime analysts, and two part-timers sitting right over there in one person. Measures of success. I mean, police works more art than science sometimes, and it's very difficult. There's a lot of facets to what we measure success. Crime and collision statistics are one thing, arrests are another, resident surveys, which obviously we had our resident survey this year, or last year that was released, and achieving goals that we set, actually not just coming up with projects, but actually finishing and follow-through, and sustaining some projects, such as the Safe Cam program and some others. Some of the key recent projects, I already talked about staffing. You know, we'll always struggle with staffing, I think, as a, you know, we have injuries and unexpected absences and things like that, that just are going to happen in police work, and there's nothing we can do about it except try and stay on top of it and keep to our maximum allowed strength so that we don't fall below that. The mutual aid agreements, we've got the model in place for the, for the first one, although we're still waiting for the county council to sign. I'm not sure when that's coming up on their agenda. I'm checking with Sue Silver to see if she can find out from the county attorney's office. But it is, it should go through rather easily. District of Columbia, we talked about that last time, and PG County will be our next one. Crime prevention, I think we're getting the word out a little bit better. We have a lot of different social media feeds and a lot of crime prevention tips that go out through that, as well as the residential security surveys, which people are becoming more and more aware of, and we're seeing more people take advantage of those. Crime prevention presentations, that includes emergency management and emergency preparedness, and the home checks and the Safe Cam program. The Safe Cam program hopefully will be up and running here in another month or so. The webpage is, and the program is actually almost there.
Is there an impediment there, or?
No, it's just the.
Just takes time.
Just takes time. And as they show us, you know, some samples, there's other things, like the one thing that they just did add, if a homeowner decided they wanted to allow, or business, allow us to have access to their video directly, they can provide that secure password to the site. And then there would be a log if we accessed it, but it would have, it's totally voluntary on their part. I don't know how often people are going to do that, but, you know, I would hope that maybe the businesses more so than, than the residences.
I know that some residents are hoping that the police department will come out with some sort of recommendation for what sort of particular models of camera that residents could buy. Maybe the businesses would appreciate that also.
You know, really.
And then, I know that some people have talked about even some sort of cooperative purchasing program. You know, maybe where the city purchases and resells, you don't want a lot of inventory, but something to consider.
Yeah, and there's, there's a number of competing vendors, and for us, we try to stay out of that, that business, but the minimum, you know, the minimum standards for the cameras, where they should be placed are the things that we would get into.
Just, yeah, specs and recommendations.
Absolutely. And, you know, basically now the pricing has come down to the point of $200 for a drop cam from Home Depot is sufficient. And it's just a question of where you put them and how you place them in the house and outside. But that's one brand of camera that we would actually probably recommend. There's other ones out there.
If you could get that out.
Yes, we will. As soon as we get, when we roll out the program, we're going to do that. And we want to do a pretty good media campaign as well when that program gets rolled out. You know, crime analysis has been a, really, that was one of the civilian staff that we hired. We have taken leaps towards intelligence-based predictive policing. We're also moving towards coordinated predictive policing with the other jurisdictions, because it really doesn't do a whole lot of good with just Tacoma Park's data set. So we are moving forward. The one key piece right now that's sort of missing is Montgomery County, but we think we're going to go forward with that as well. Training, we have a number of staff that are still going for undergraduate and postgraduate degree programs, bringing up the educational level. We've seen a real increase in staff requests for tuition reimbursement, which is a good thing. I mean, we want the department to be reflective of the community. We have a fairly educated community in Tacoma Park. One of the other things that we've implemented, about a third of the department, a little over a third of the department now is trained in the LOXONE, which is the Narcan, is the trade name for the drug that basically will reverse an opiate overdose. We actually responded to two overdoses last week, one of which, we were going to use ours, the fire rescue showed up at the same time, spilled theirs and had to use ours. So it, we got a half a save on that one. And, but it's a good program, and the opiate epidemic in this region, and actually nationwide, is just off the charts. It's, it is a cheap high, and there's a number of different opiates out there that people are using. Traffic enforcement education, we are revamping the way we do some of the traffic enforcement requests. We are, we have a link on the webpage that, I don't know if it's up and running, but it's an email for traffic complaints, which will go directly to the traffic supervisor so that they can be doled out, and we keep a record of it. And of course, everybody sees the traffic enforcement logs at the end of the week, so they'll get some feedback as far as what we've actually been doing. We instituted a metro count last year to eliminate the ambiguity when people call and say people are speeding down my street, or there's too much traffic. We can actually put the count out there, put it out there for a fairly extended period of time. This time of year is bad because we don't want them getting scraped up by the snowplows, but we can put them out there. We have real facts of how to deploy our resources, rather than just what people's perceptions Violent crime continues to decline. Vehicle-related thefts were up. We're going to talk more about crime statistics next, after next month, the quarter, we're going to do quarterly crime reports. And we've also redone how we do our weeklies. We're going to do a two-week crime report, but it's going to be year-to-date, and it's going to have a year-to-date basis with past year comparisons every, every two weeks that will be posted. I already talked about the real-time crime analytics and the interoperability, and also our situational awareness. We also want to increase our visibility in community-oriented policing through, and again, I encourage citizens to invite us to the community events. We're not getting invited, and a lot of times we don't know about the events beforehand, and so it's not something we can just show up and be the party, crash the party, you know? It's because we're not getting notified a lot of these events. So we encourage people to have, if you want an officer to come by, whether it's to talk or just to be there to get to know that community, that's fine. We look forward to that.
I know that you go to a lot of community meetings personally. You send Captain Collington. Do you have a dedicated community-oriented policing officer at this point? Do you contemplate assigning someone?
No. We're trying to do a slightly different model versus having one. We're trying to do a slightly different model versus having one officer that we depend on, I think community policing is a responsibility everybody within the police department, but we do need a coordinated effort, and one of the things that we're looking to do is, once we get to fully staffed, and I'm talking about paperfully staffed, I'm not talking about the real world, we will probably take two or three officers, maybe a supervisor and two officers, and create what's known as a community action team, that will do a number of things, one, they can do targeted enforcement for certain hotspots, but they will also be out there for outreach, and education, and things like that, so I think that's going to be a good opportunity, but that'll probably be somewhere next fall, the only reason I'm delaying it, we have three rookies that we have to train when they come out of the academy next month, next month, I think they graduate, so, and they all look like they're going to graduate, right, yeah. So, we're in good shape as far as that, and then we're going to, you know, the county has those models of police community action teams, and then they created a DCAT, which is a district community action team in each district, their missions are really dependent upon what the district commander wants to do with them, but we want to use that as our community policing team, and we don't want to depend on one person, because, you know, they go on vacation, they go on leave, extended leave, whatever, we, you know, we need to have redundancy within the department for many of the tasks we do.
Do many of the officers get invited to neighborhood association meetings?
In the county?
No, here.
Or here?
Here.
Rarely, I mean, we just have not, I mean, I was very surprised, for as tight-knit of a community as this is, with the community meetings that we have, and just the cookouts and things like that, you know, once in a while, I get them, and I'll go to the meetings, but we just aren't getting the invites that I was really expecting, and, you know, so, I encourage it.
That was my sense from what you said, and I was remembering, when I went to a lot more neighborhood association meetings, generally, the police were always invited and were there for maybe a short period of time, maybe a longer period of time.
And quite often, especially if you feed them, they'll come, you know, you know, they will be more than happy to, and it's good to put a face with the officers that patrol your neighborhood, and you get to know them and talk to them, and it's not just the guy.
And many times, there would be two or three who would show up, and then there would be a call, and they'd all leave.
Right, and that's just the nature of the beast. Some of our challenges, our staffing obviously, is just keeping up, implementation of technology by other agencies, that's a challenge, because we don't control them, we are sometimes the little fish in the pond, the good news is, you know, we are very involved in COG, I'm not going to say, right now, I'm the vice chair on the chiefs committee, I'd probably be volunteered to take the chair next time, but Captain Bowers does the SWAT ERT committee, runs on the emergency preparedness and the planning committee, so we have a lot of involvement, Dan Freshcorn's on the investigative subcommittee in COG, so we have a lot of influence in that organization, and steering it to a regional approach, and I think it's worked out well in the last year, we've gotten a lot done, and some of the, that segues into opportunities going forward, social media and communications, we are staying on top of it, you know, Kathy is learning new skills, and Craig is also been a real boon as far as getting the word out. Again, personal outreach from the officers, getting out of the cars, and also going to some of those community organizations, we are working on customer service as far as follow-up, and making sure that we do contact people back within, not every case, but in as many cases as we can, where we're contacting them back. One of the things that we were, and this also goes to what we were talking about a little bit, or what was presented a little bit earlier, about outreach programs, at-risk youth and things like that, we're looking at a couple different mentoring programs, one of the programs that we do, we've been, sort of been on the back burner because of staffing, but we're going to move forward with is the Explorer program, we have one resource, one of our dispatchers is an Explorer advisor from Montgomery County, he was a former Explorer, and it really, I actually sat through a retirement, I actually didn't sit through it, I emceed this retirement party the other day, and there were a lot of accolades for the Explorer program, as a person retiring as one of the long-term advisors, and the number of people that are, that really made a difference in their lives when they were younger, actually spoke up, and it really sort of hit me a little bit harder, hearing it from them at that party, and I think it's a good thing, I think it's something that we should do, it requires, you know, the age group, I think, is 16 to 20 or so, but the, one of the things that the Explorer program requires is GPAs have to be maintained and other things, so it really can keep them on the straight and narrow. The other thing, Captain Collington's working on a couple of projects, one of which is a mentoring program, and then the other thing we're going to be involved in is the midnight basketball, it's one day a week up at the, at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, so we're going to have officers there more in like soft clothes, not there to guard them, and not there to be, but to be more mentors, if they have questions, we can answer those questions and things like that. Again, real-time policing, predictive analytics, and one of the other projects that started, Captain Bowers took the lead on that, is reducing staffing shortages, hopefully through injury prevention, and a wellness and exercise program. It's not mandatory, but it pretty much sets the baseline, this is, you know, everybody takes the test every, each year, and it's a sort of an eye-opener for some people, but the more that we can get people into this voluntarily, and then, you know, make it actually just part of the job, as far as, you know, they know they're going to expect this, and they need to stay in shape, that's where we lose our staffing, is injuries, and some of the injuries are preventable through exercise and a wellness program, others are not, I mean, there's, like, when you miss the tackle, and you land on a rock, that's the bad ones, but some of the other ones are preventable, and especially the health issues, and sick leave use, and things like that.
Well, thank you for your report, especially thank you for the work you're doing towards the youth, in more than just an enforcement vein.
Yeah, and it's really always been that way, to a degree, you know, each officer, you know, has their way of dealing with some of the at-risk youth, and some of them have a very good relationship with them, you know, there's always going to be those that don't, but I think that we are in a good place in this city, I think, you know, we have a very good rapport with most of the community, but it can be better.
Yep, and I thank you for paying attention to that, something that's not budget-related, I hope, but, you know, I sent you a couple of weeks ago, an email about the traffic circle on Ritchie and Oswego, and I just wondered if you, I haven't noticed in the traffic enforcement reports, any details there, I just wondered if...
Not off the top of my head, I know that the one at Elm and Lincoln has been problematic as well, and, you know, I get numerous emails about that one from the constituents, but, yeah, they go around the wrong way in the circle, I think the interesting excuse today was, he was afraid of black ice on the lower end of the circle, so he went the other way, but...
Yeah, the concern that the neighbors have is that, I guess, people coming out of the driveways right along the circle there, not only are sometimes challenged by the cars coming the wrong way around the circle, but are even threatened and yell at, because they're not allowing the other driver to disobey the law, or they're...
Yeah, no, and we will, I will let Michelle know about it.
And then the city vehicles and county vehicles are particularly, particular concern, they're going around the circle the wrong way, we won't mention which department, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think it's exclusive.
You are going to be hearing from residents of the Philadelphia Eastern Neighborhood up the hill here, about having a community meeting to talk about crime concerns that stemmed from the assault on Cedar Avenue back four or five, whatever, months ago, so you'll be getting that request soon, and then, parking issues are perennial in that neighborhood, I guess it's too soon to have any kind of results of measurements, but I know you're on top of that. So, is the new, my favorite question, tedious question, but, parking enforcement officer?
Actually, I think we're down to one candidate, and, because the other one didn't comply with some of the requests, so it's just a, his background investigation should be done hopefully by next weekend, and we can try to get him on board, but, yeah, he turned his packet in late, it's not on us, so he didn't fill it out, he had a, I think he had a family emergency, and went out of town for a couple of weeks, and that's why we didn't hear from him, and so he filled out his background investigation form, and we should have it finished by Monday or so.
Yeah, I have to say that I have not heard any complaints or associated with the opening of bus boys, they've been open for dinners only, and for not a whole lot of time, what, five days or something like that, but nothing so far, let's see, I know that you are working on building a new Metropolitan Police Department, Fourth District commander relationship with the new commander there, set to developing.
Well, we daily communicate with each other.
Yeah, because I know there were operational issues getting them to show up at meetings and stuff like that recently, and, you know, whether, I'm sure that relationship will help fix some of that.
Yeah, I mean, if there's an issue that comes up where they're not coming to a meeting that, you know, just let me know, and I can shoot him an email as well, and, I mean, we haven't had too many issues, well, that was a whole different issue, the Fourth District and the funeral, that was two different things, because that's Special Operations Division, and that had nothing to do with 4D.
Oh, okay, I didn't understand that, yeah, and then a question I've asked on a number of occasions, just wanting to stay on top of it, the status of license plate data sharing with the State Fusion Center.
Yeah, we're still having some firewall issues, as is, I think, Gaithersburg City, and, you know, it, for whatever reason, there were some changes in the firewall, and we're having trouble getting the stuff uploaded and downloaded, so...
Well, that's good news.
For those that voted against it, it is probably good news, but it is working, I mean, the audit system, the automation is there, we're just, for whatever reason, it's Montgomery County's firewall that we're having the issue with, so, we're trying to work through that.
Well, we, you know, if some political pressure can help, we have the person here who can make it happen.
I worked for the county for 34 years, and I'm not deferring, I'm not saying that that wouldn't happen, but their DTS works at one speed, no matter who yells at them, but we are working on it, it's not the police department so much as it is the backend firewall, and they have security, you know, if they do some security enhancements, and it screws everything else up, then we play catch-up with them.
Thanks.
Chief, I have just a couple of questions, Councilmember Grimes mentioned the Fourth District, and I wonder if either at your next quarterly report, or the one after, it's not necessarily time-sensitive, if you could do a bit of a deeper dive into crime trends in the Fourth District, and then in adjoining areas in PG County, and I guess I'm interested both in trends, and you've hinted at some of those at some points, but also whether there are any particular patterns, so for example, I know in PG County, and in this part of Montgomery County, we had a series of sexual assaults or rapes, you know, Slagger Creek, the trail sort of system, a while ago, a few years ago, so just essentially giving us an update on that, for a little context.
Really, yeah, I mean, basically, I can just tell you right off the top, that violent crime is still down in both DC and in Prince George's County, as well as Montgomery County, I don't think we put it out, but there was a bulletin, the county put out their yearly statistics, and one of the interesting things was, they showed a large increase in vehicle, thefts from vehicles as well, that popped their stats, that stats up in that one category, that really skewed the entire, but, and theirs was like 67 or 75% unlocked cars, you know, when we talked about crime a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the Rittenhouse Crew, just good news, I'll just pop this one out, but we've got two more DNA hits from two of the burglaries in that neighborhood, came back to our friends from Rittenhouse Crew, so, they were responding, and one was a larceny from auto, I mean, so we know that they were responsible for a lot of those as well, proving it's another matter, but it's just a small handful of people can really spike your crime, and they've done it in Silver Spring, and they've done it in the Hyattsville District as well, but, yeah, I can see what I can get from DC, I know I can get Montgomery County's, we can get that directly, as well.
I mean, just, you know, sort of, the thing we don't necessarily hear about is when Councilmember Grimes mentioned the one assault that happened, so when one or two or three crimes right next to our borders create some sort of neighborhood concerns, we don't necessarily get that context, so, you know, there may not be anything.
Oh, you'll see, I mean, if you just go on crime reports yourself and just look, you can see what's there, you're going to see a lot more red dots on that side of the border, but that's just the nature of the beast in the Fourth District.
Okay, thank you.
The, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, Chief, going back to the Safe Cam program, and thank you for meeting with residents in December, and there are a number of them who are excited for that program to start, and to help get out the word, so, as soon as things are up and running, I'd love to know about it. The other question, just to repeat myself, is the photographing of young people in our community, after the last time you were here, I had the opportunity to talk to some of the young people in the Man Up program, and they're still a bit confused about the program, and I think it is causing some tensions, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to speak with them, this is a couple of weeks ago, but...
No, I know when Captain Collington met with them earlier this year, I mean, they were getting a little bit of misinformation, as well as what the police can and can't do, and one of the things that we try to stress is that, yeah, you, we might even be wrong, but the street's not the place to fight it out, there's a remedy, but in the case of juveniles being, yes, if we have a reason to take their picture, because they're being detained as a suspect in a crime, or suspected crime, not just randomly stopped and photographed, you know, then we can take a picture, if they're being arrested, obviously, they're going to get their picture taken, but what we did, we are rolling out, and we just haven't really been FI-ing that many people lately, is that we will be notifying the parents, so, or if they can tell us their real name and phone numbers, we'll be notifying the parents, but that is the one thing I think that can cut some of the misinformation down, because once we call the parents and tell them, hey, this is, we got your kid, this is why we stopped them, and then when they go home and lie about why they were stopped, then, and hopefully then, the parents will, you know, realize that, you know, okay, there's more to it. Usually the way it works now is they go home, they tell their parents, oh, this police stopped me for no reason or anything, they get upset, and then they get another relative upset, and then the CNOs are making a complaint, and if they, if we had just reached out to the parents to begin with, I think we would have probably eliminated, you know, at least half of them, I mean, you know, any number, there's always going to be people that are not pleased, but we don't share that information with others, we don't share those photographs with others.
Well, how long do you keep them on file?
We keep them pretty much forever, in the FI files, we don't purge those, but, fielded interview, that's just our own files, it's our own database, and it's not something that's minable by anyone else, it's just on our own computer.
Well, I'd like to see, maybe, for the acting city manager, in the future, you know, I understand you're doing what you're allowed to do, I'm not questioning that at all, but I think the question is whether or not we want to be doing that in our community, and maybe just having more information about, is it, just like we did with the license plate readers, I think, and, like, how beneficial it is to...
I can tell you it's extremely beneficial, that's how we get pictures of people that commit crimes, and then we can go back and do a line, a photo lineup, or whatever, I mean, that's, you know, if we have a suspect, and we stop them, but we can't get the victim to identify them that night, or we have to take a picture of them, and then we put them in a photo spread three weeks later, when we have another crime, and a witness did see them, they pick them out of the lineup, I mean, that, it is an invaluable tool, and I don't see a distinction between the fact that they're 17 or 18, if they're 18 years old, we're going to do it, 17, 16, I mean, if they're out committing crimes, and we're going to, we need to do that.
But you're not stopping ones that are out committing crimes.
Well, I would argue to say if...
You're not making arrests. And then taking their picture, you're taking pictures of those who...
Correct, right, as an investigative tool, right.
What's the percentage of those people that you've taken their picture, how many of those people actually commit crimes, or do you have that data?
Well, I have no idea, I mean, it's like, because we haven't caught them necessarily, we can't necessarily charge them with a crime, if you look at the numbers that we've taken in the FIs, only a small percentage of them were juveniles, very small percentage compared to the rest.
Very large percentage of them are minorities, though.
Yes, but that's the... Yes. But that's the, the nature of the beast where we live and the people that are committing those crimes. So, um, um, uh, you know, we've had that discussion before. We, we don't, we are reactionary, uh, to the, to the crimes that are going on around us. If we have, uh, red-haired, blue-eyed, green-skinned people committing crimes, we're probably going to stop them more than we're going to stop the people that aren't committing the crimes. I mean, it's just the way it is. It's where we live. It's, it's the demographics where we live. If you worked up in Germantown, um, in, in the Germantown District or Frederick or Carroll County, you're going to see a totally different demographic that gets stopped.
This is a discussion I think we should have, and I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I just think it was a discussion. And I think having more information, um, and if it's not actually happening as much as some folks feel like it's happening, that would be helpful to know as well. And I think it's a two-track thing. One, for us as council, to have the conversation and understand how you're using this. Um, and then also just to build the relationships with members of the community. Because there is definitely a feeling of being targeted. Um, and-
I, I will give you an example of one instance where, um, an officer was training another officer and one of our repeat offenders, uh, who is one of the people that will make a complaint in a heartbeat. Um, they were driving down the street and he goes, oh yeah, that's this guy. And they just looked at him. He came in and made a complaint that he was being harassed. Because they looked at him as they drove by. We can't help those perceptions sometimes. Uh, and, and also people will complain because they don't want to get stopped and they may be committing crimes. So there's always the other edge of that sword. And, and I think there's a balance that we strike when we do that. But we have to understand that the officers are going to be able to stop people. They have to be able to stop people to do their job. And, you know, we have to have at least a reasonable suspicion, an articulable reasonable suspicion to stop somebody. Like they match a description of lookout, you know, they were seen acting suspiciously. And there's different ways that they approach it. And depending on the circumstance, no two circumstances are the same. And the officers, you know, justify what they, what they do. And, and I think it's a great tool. But we can, we can continue that discussion.
But Chief, I, I wanted to follow up with you about Slaggo Church. Uh, we discussed, um, the church wanting to have officers, you know, work on Saturdays, their Sabbath. Have they contacted you? Did they-
No. And, and again, I, you know, as we, we talked about, that would probably be something outside of their, the, the regular work.
Right.
They would, they, you know, they can hire officers just like other places hire them.
Okay. And also I want to follow up on, uh, Houston Court. How is that going? Is it still as big of a problem as it was?
Uh, I think the prob- well, this time of year, you don't necessarily see it as much because it stays inside the building.
Right.
Um, and generally the people in the building aren't the ones calling us.
Yes. I know.
It's, it's because some of them do live in that building. Um, there's still, you know, drug dealing going on.
Right.
There is a, a party that went out of control there a couple of weeks ago when the weather was still warm and there were some shots fired, a gun recovered, things like that. So it, it's still a hotspot, but it, it, this time of year, it generally stays inside.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
I've been hearing a lot of discussion recently about body cams, mostly at the, uh, MML Legislative Committee, because we've been talking about a number of bills and there are a lot of bills coming in about body cameras. And the, the general response from the police chief's representative on the committee is that they're working on those, those bills and they're, that about 80% of chiefs are in favor of those cameras. And they're trying to work on the parameters that'll work best for everybody. And so I was just wondering if you have any update on your sense of how things are going with, uh, implementation of body cameras. And I know you've been trying to put together a-
Yeah. I think we still need to have some legislative changes, um, and some clarification of the state law, uh, as far as, as, I mean, there, there are some bills that are so far out there that, you know, that are just out of left field. I mean, basically, you'd have to go through a check sheet and a permission slip to, to video and audio record somebody on a call. And then the next officer's going to have to repeat it when he walks in the door. Um, you know, everybody in the house has to agree to it. And th- those are not workable solutions for us. Uh, what we are doing here, we are, uh, putting out, uh, a number of body cameras, two different models of the same, from the same company, um, that, that we are testing and evaluating. And we are using them under the same parameters that we use the in-car video. So we're just using it for basically traffic stops at this point, just to, to test the, the camera and the system out. Uh, we only have two right now and they're, they're over a year old. And the technology's already changed. So we're getting the new ones that I think were on four weeks, or March 10th. There you go. Happy birthday. Almost. Um, so we are getting some new cameras in. Uh, one of the advantages that, that, one of the things that that, that, uh, that particular brand gives us is that, uh, an officer with a smartphone can actually use the evidence.com app and take their evidence pictures right on the phone and upload it directly in with the case number. And it goes in the same place as all of our other video. So it's all in one place and it takes it off of the phone. So we don't have those discovery issues where they want, you know, they, they want to see your phone. So it actually doesn't retain anything on the phone. Um, those are some of the issues, some of the things that we're looking at. But we, we are moving forward. Right now, um, both the traffic officers, I believe, have them. Bobby Rodriguez and Michelle, if you see her walking around like Robocop with the camera on her, on her Oakleys, that's, that's what's, uh, what she's wearing right now.
A couple of questions. Um, I've heard of some recent problems, noise problems, again, from Zion's Lutheran Church, from, uh, the New Hampshire Avenue Church that we, you and I and the city manager and some others had the occasion to visit last October, I think, or September. Have you, are you aware of any recent calls?
Not offhand, no.
Hmm. Some people have told me they've called.
Well, they may have. I mean, it's just hasn't gotten to the volume where it's gotten back to me or no, and no one's actually called me about it. So-
Okay. All right. Um, I had been looking forward to getting some, uh, the non-UCR crime data on my favorite hotspot over there, the, the, the two motels. And I think you were looking at getting that, having that data compiled by about now.
Yeah. That'll, we'll, we'll pull that with the crime, the annual report. We're not quite there yet.
Oh.
Um, we're still compiling some of the data because the part two offenses, you know, the part one stuff is the, the part that everybody talks about. They don't talk about the part two.
It's the part two that I'm particularly concerned about, as you know.
Well, we've done a number of prostitution stings over there, our, our special assignment team, as well as, uh, we just, like, we just got an AK-47 off of somebody over there yesterday.
Terrific.
Yeah. So, um, we are making, uh, quite a few arrests over there.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why you see, you'll see the numbers are going to be high because we actually initiate a lot of the stuff over there.
You initiate it?
Yeah.
How?
Well, I mean, we're, we're at pro act, I mean, when I say we initiate it, we're going out there looking for it because we know it's happening. But it's not, it's not the type of crime people necessarily call us on. It's the stuff that we sit there and wait and watch and, and make the arrests.
I see. Now, I just want to be able to get some quantitative measures and some trend measures, because I want to be able to take that data and talk to the, to the property owners about it.
Well, I believe it's, it was number two or three on the total calls for service that we handled in the city.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that was only, I think, second to the WAB, which is just because we take a lot of reports there. And, and 7500 Maple Avenue, because we take a lot of reports here. So-
So it's our number one.
It's really your number one outside of the, uh, outside of the, the routine reporting areas.
When do you think you might have that?
I, I can probably get to you next week sometime.
That'd be, that'd be good. Good. Okay.
Thank you. And that takes care of our roundtables for this evening.
Thanks very much. And if you have questions that may be engendered, or think about them later, please let me know. Appreciate it very much.
And we're adjourned.